Oh, favor.
Aye.
We have next on the agenda is the public presentation comment period. The Agenda Public Comment Period is an opportunity for our citizens to give input on issues on the Board's agenda which are not the subject of a public hearing and is not intended as a question-answer period. This period has a 20-minute limit and such time will be split equally among the members of the individuals who have signed up. For individuals who wish to give input on rental and county issues which are not on the Board's agenda, there is a 60-minute general public comment period at the end of each meeting. Ms. Mouse, has anyone signed up?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, three individuals. Mr. Gary Kushner?
My name is Gary Kushner. I live in 1106 Fetchit Road in the South District. I first want to say that I have, in the past year, had the opportunity to work with the planning department on several issues and was very pleased with the response I've gotten from them. They've had a great attitude and were very professional in response. And the citizens of the county are very fortunate to have someone like Terron Logan directing that team. I'm here to speak to Agenda Item K, a closed session under personnel. I've had the opportunity over the last month to speak to literally hundreds of citizens and taxpayers in Warren County. And there's a great concern about the performance of the county administrator in serving the citizens in this board over the past several years. I'm under the impression that that contract expires in mid-2020 and that there may be some effort to extend that contract before it expires and before a new board can be empowered in 2020 after the election. I believe the new board should have the opportunity to decide who will assist Warren County citizens and the Board of Supervisors in our future challenges and not have that taken away from them.
Here.
I hear that the Board has spoken to recognition of the trust that may have been damaged over several issues in the county in the past couple of years and their desire to try and improve that trust. And I would urge them to think very carefully whether they to venture forward with such an initiative and leave the contract for the county administrator to a new board. Thank you.
Paul Gabbard?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I hardly ever am up at this hour, so this is new to me. Mr. Murray, I hope you're healthy.
He's good.
The two things I have is funding of the two additional Commonwealth terms. I don't know why we would need two more. I just see that as more expense, more money being wasted by the county. I just, I don't get it. The other thing is the awarded contract for the third party for the New Rivermont Fire Department. Is the public going to know who this third party is and is it going to be, is it going to be awarded before we know who it is so we know that it's not somebody that's affiliated with anybody in the county? And I agree with the previous gentleman on the voting to renew the county administrator's contract. That should be left until the new people are, get seated because nothing ever seems to happen while this administration is in place.
All right, Paul, could you give your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry. Paul Gabbard, 1221 Valley D Drive.
Right.
You're welcome. That's all I have to say.
Mr. any discussion? If not, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Ms. Lavis?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Mr. Sayer?
Aye.
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
That passes. Next is general public presentation comment period. Ms. Mouse, has anyone signed up?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, three individuals. Mr. Paul Gabbard?
All right, Paul Gabbard, 1221 Valley D Drive. I know y'all get tired seeing me come up here, but I talk to a lot of people in the county and they ask me to come up here for them because they're too afraid to come up here and speak in front of you. So with all of those people, I come up here and I have their rights, not just mine. And one of the things is, well, first, I've got a question for our, well, Mr. Stanley's not here.
He was there, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'll carry on. A lot of these things are why the people of the county are so angry and it even goes beyond angry of, you know, everybody, the EDA, all of you. They see, one of them is land being bought up for whatever reason. Buildings, a warehouse being bought that is, the monthly payment is $25,000 on there and then you have insurance on top of that. What a waste of money. And that's what everybody sees, is so much waste of money that everybody's afraid this county is going to go bankrupt. And let's see. They don't, the citizens feel like their concerns aren't important to anybody. That is one of the big things. They, there's no action taken for any concerns that the citizens bring up here. There's just nothing ever said or done about these issues. The people of this county, they're looking for a change in leadership all the way around. This is how angry people are. I don't know if y'all follow Facebook, What's Up Front Royal, all these other things, but if you do, you can see that people are very, very angry and they're angry over the same Mr. Stanley is here. Mr. Stanley, I've got a question for you whether you'll answer it or not. Can you, can you give me the two names of the other insurance companies that were solicited for the county insurance? I'm not going to answer that.
Mr. Chairman, no, that's not a question. Answer period. When you say-
He wants to answer my question.
So when you say county insurance, so-
The insurance that Mr. Carter has.
All right, that's not the county insurance. The county is insured by-
Okay, the insurance that Mr. Carter has, was there other two companies solicited?
The insurance, if you're referencing the fire and rescue department, because I have no involvement with the EDA insurance.
What the insurance Mr. Carter has with the county-
With the county.
With the county, was there two other companies solicited?
So it was put out-
That's a very easy question.
I'm trying to answer it, Mr. Gabbard.
No, you're not.
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
The county put it out to bid. When you put things out to bid, it's governed by the Code of Virginia as far as the process.
Who was to put out the bid?
So you, it was put out, advertised in a newspaper, it was put on our website and advertised and we solicited bids. So I think the county received two Chesterfield insurers, I believe was one, and I believe Stoneboro Car was the other. We received two bids. So we don't control when we advertise the, you know, who submits or who doesn't. We don't conform to who, somebody may call the fire and rescue department and ask about the insurance and decide not to put a bid on, in for that, but we advertise that anyone would have the ability to be able to submit a bid on that insurance package.
So there's a little hand paper that you're looking for, people bid on, but the county doesn't call other insurance agencies to ask if they want to put a bid on to save the county money.
Chief, maybe in those instances, you do talk to other insurance companies.
I'm not worried about the chief.
Is that correct?
That's not what I'm asking.
Okay.
Another big problem, and I might have broke, go ahead now, me and Mr. Stanley are going back and forth. The biggest thing in this county is people want to see the county administrator replaced. That's a fact. Everybody. So I hope that you all don't go behind everybody and make a quick thing of voting him back in before the new members get put on the board. If you do, you know, you're not going to be a very well-liked person in this county. People have a hard time getting accounting issues, getting any kind of requested information about county money, about budgets. They get the runaround, they don't get their calls answered. This is an experience that I have. There was a phone call made to the county to get a balance, a monthly balance. I think it was through June. Got the runaround, couldn't send it to us. What they did send didn't make sense, it wasn't what we were asking for. Then we find out that they don't do monthly statements because they don't do accruals until the end of the year. You can't do accruals at the end of the year. That's impossible. That's totally impossible. And that came from Mr. Stanley's office. So if you don't do accruals every month, you don't know how much money you have. That's basic accounting. We were told that the accounting system is totally outdated, that it's so old that they have to put stuff in through, I can't think of the name of, but anyway, we were told through Mr. Stanley's office that the accounting system is just old and no good. This is what a lot of people would like to see because the accounting system is so old and so, and because nobody, nobody can get any answers about the amount of money that this county has on a monthly basis or anything. People are sent different numbers, they're sent what they're not, they're not asking for. And this is what, everybody I talk to say, hey, we should do this. The county should get a group of citizens, let this group of citizens pick out an accounting firm to do an eye for the last two years and see how bad this dilapidated accounting system is and to see if the numbers are correct. And of course, that would be paid for by the county. But people want these, you know, people have questions, they want them answered. They want to know how much money this county actually has, how much money's being spent and where it's going to. Where it's going to. There's land being bought up out on Happy Creek Road by individuals that know building is going to be happening out there. It's a hotspot. Mr. Lou Ellen is one that left an EDA meeting when he was on the Board or he was chairman, left the meeting early to go out and get a loan to buy the land where the hospital sits. That's insider information. That's ridiculous. That's how a lot of the land in this county is being bought up because people know what's coming. And another person who owns a big tract of land out there that has already been engineered for residential is Mr. Kirk Tran of IT Federal. I just thought that was very amusing and I think that's all I have. Oh, yes. That's all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Mouse, who else?
Mr. James Harper?
Yeah, yeah, you should have given Mr. Stanley Shenandoah County's phone number. My name is James Harper. I live at 3658 Rockman Road in Frontwell. Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, I come for you this morning to follow up on a few items from our last appearance and submit a list of questions that the Chairman promised last month that if I give to them, he will get answers. I've attended the last several meetings and offered what I and others think are suggestions to improve certain operations in the county. And so far, not one supervisor has followed up on anything. Since the county has had six years of tax increases, wouldn't it be a good idea to consider listening and asking questions? On a positive note, I'd like to say I thank the superintendent of the regional jail, and I'm hoping I pronounced his last name correctly, Mr. Gillikson, is doing a good job. After listening to the podcast on the Royal Examiner, he and Sheriff Carter seemed to have a very good understanding of the issues. It was brought up by Sheriff Carter that the jail runs at 90% capacity and staffing is 75%. That means a lot of overtime and tired employees could pose a problem. Cleanup of our roads by the inmates helps our community look better. Now, if they can figure out how to stop people from littering, that would be great. Praising Mr. Gillikson does not mean that you need to tear up his contract and give him another raise. All too often, you supervisors and school board members don't feel it necessary to have employees complete their contracts before handing out big raises. I am against the residential crooked-run development that Mr. Stanley seems to be pushing. This is the only hope for major commercial development in Warren County in the near future. The selling point is that it's close to I-66 and 81. The residential development is a loser for the town and county. Water treatment upgrades will have to be done along with costly infrastructure work. Maybe there should be a referendum on the November ballot and see how the citizens feel. By the way, we already have residential development approved off Happy Creek Road and that is close to our schools. Let's develop that first. The Economic Development Authority is a mess. I think you should still shut it down for two years until we have a handle on all the financial issues. After listening to their last meeting, they still do not have a handle on all the loans and lines of credit. It's unbelievable. Very frustrating to hear Mr. Parsons say that Carolyn at the bank is checking and will get back to us. No urgency. There seems to be no urgency and I would imagine law enforcement would be interested to see if any malfeasance occurred in any of the loans or lines of credit. Would also like to see a list of the properties the EDA owns and also Warren County might publish those in local papers along with associated debt of these properties for citizen We deserve to know that this is our money. The last EDA Board meeting, they spent more time discussing per diem than on how to attract new business development. The gentleman in the green shirt, I didn't catch his name, was the only person asking relevant questions. Any EDA Board member who voted to purchase the Stokes Building should resign as they do not have the county's best interests. The EDA Board members should also pledge during their term not to enrich themselves. One Board member and Mr. Parsons should schedule a meeting with Mr. Tran to discuss his plans moving forward. Understand that sheets would like to build across the bridge on Shenandoah Avenue. It's not a good spot as it will cause too much traffic backup all the way to the stoplight and we don't have, and don't we have enough gas stations already? And this is for you, Mr. Sayer. Mr. Sayer, will you drop your case against Jennifer McDonough? I'm just talking to you, Mr. Murray, Mr. Sayer. She is probably using county money, in other words, citizen money for her legal team. If you win, it might be by county money that you win. Stop being a bully and save taxpayer money. In the last few weeks, I've been going down to Edinburgh, reading the Northern Virginia Daily newspapers, and I see your name in several legal proceedings. In 2010, you were sued, it seems, for the same reason that you're suing Jennifer McDonough. It does seem that you have a problem getting along with people. And the name of that case is Soliverity versus Sayer ET. And a list of questions for the Chairman. And I'll read those out loud so they can be, but I want to be sure you've got those in writing. Please provide a list of all the EDA and county-owned properties. That's number one. The Board of Supervisors' goals for 2019, number 11. Please provide your plans for stopping the deficit spending to break even or show profit at the Frontwell Country Club. The Board of Supervisors' goals for 2019, number 22. What is your plan to make the airport self-sufficient? Why was the regional jail built on prime real estate site and not on a B or C site? What are your plans for bringing natural gas to everyone in Warren County? Does Mr. Stanley have an interest in the crooked-run development? Did you or any other supervisor speak to Mr. Stanley about his lack of oversight regarding the EDA in the last several years? If so, what was his response? Did you ask Mr. Stanley why he could not call neighboring counties to see who they use for county insurance and get a third bid? Why does Mr. Stanley drive a county-owned Chevy Suburban and not a mid-sized car? His contract does not specify a top-of-the-line car. Did anyone question any school board member about the million-dollar bonus paid to a contractor to do roof work at Russi Jeffries in the evening? And this one, why doesn't the clerk, whom the Board states in their Policy and Procedure Section 2-3, as being the county administrator, follow the policy and having the agenda posted at least 48 hours prior to the Board of Supervisors' meeting, stated in Section 5-2? The Board meeting is today at 9:00 a.m. and the agenda was not online at 1:00 p.m. yesterday when I checked. I checked again last night and it was finally posted. Did our county administrator just forget? Thank you and I look forward to your response, Mr. Chairman.
I respond to at least one of the items now for the last two years. The airport has been self-sufficient.
Breaking even?
It's profited by $45,000 or $46,000 for the, over the last two years.
Really?
Yes. If we do our homework, we can find that out. Thank you.
I will, I'll go back and look at the Northern Virginia Daily. Is that correct, Ms. Lavis?
I'm not on the airport commission.
Oh, well, I'll go back and read the Northern Virginia. That's my source of information is going back and maybe that's not a good place, but that's the only avenue that I have is to read the local papers.
I was on the airport authority and I saw me that turn to make a profit, or at least on the operational side. We do have a member of the airport commission here. You can correct me if I'm wrong, but we are on the profit side.
I'm no longer a member of that commission, but, Mr. Chairman, we have someone here that may address that.
Mr. Childers in the back, if he would care. Is that something you could address, Mr. Childers?
Sir, I have to be good. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, don't have the exact number off the top of my head, but I believe last year's operating budget, we had a surplus of $48,000, $49,000, if I'm not mistaken. So we have been operating in the black for the last-
Have you had the year before that? Do you have, you've become-
I don't recall the number off the top of my head, but when, it's been about five or six years ago, we started operating in the black.
I know you've had some capital costs, land acquisition, things like that. If that's an operating standpoint that you guys have.
Operating standpoint, we at least break even.
Thank you. I appreciate having Mr. Childers come.
Thank you.
Can I do the follow-up question? Mr. Chairman?
Really, I'm supposed to, but go ahead.
How much money does the, maybe Mr. Stanley could help me with this, but how much money does the county give the airport each year?
Well, when we're saying covering its weight, so the rentals of your hangars, the rentals from companies like PHI that are there versus expenses, there's no, when we're saying we're breaking even or making money on a positive cash flow, that means no general fund tax dollars in the operation. Again, I think they're from a grant and capital. We've been matching grant applications. Again, the feds will pick up 90% of a lot of the cost of capital, 8% on a state if it qualifies and 2% local. But I'd say, when we say we're breaking even, correct, Bob, there's no general fund tax revenue. That means that the revenue generated from leases and rentals at the airport cover the operational costs, save for FY '19.
So what you're saying is the county doesn't give any money to the airport?
It would in years that we're running a deficit.
Correct.
Correct.
And this past year?
This past year, at least, I think you're correct, it was possible.
The county gave them money? Okay. Long on the record. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Is there anyone else, Ms. Mouse?
Tim Radigan?
I had to think about it for a second. I want to keep this as short as I can. I live on Oregon's South River on Stonewall Jackson Highway, the 340. And for the most part, I happen to think, I'm a little biased, but I happen to think that the 340 happens to be one of the most scenic routes in Warren County. Every spring, I look forward to the appearance of the Red Bud and of course, the Dogwood. And this year, the Red Bud's season was a little shorter than last year. Last year, I think it went about two or three weeks. But I have been concerned, very concerned. It seems like every day or every other day, there is a, as I'm driving into town, there's another new bag of trash on the side of the road that's been busted open. Or there's a TV antenna in the ditch and there's a great big bag of trash that's been busted open and spread around all over someone's driveway. I'm going to ask the question and I will give you the courtesy to answer the question or get back to me at some time. We do, the Warren County Code, correct me if I'm wrong, does have a section in it regarding covering your loads, do they not? Aren't you supposed to be able to, you're going to have to cover your loads?
You're correct.
I drive a little SUV and I put all the trash in the back, so I never have to. Only worry about stuff flying out. Okay, but people with pickup trucks, you know, I drive down the road with their, obviously with their loads uncovered. I don't think anybody deliberately sits in the back of the truck and throws trash bags on the side of the road. Okay, so my big question is this. I know the county provides for free nets, or cargo nets, to tie these loads down. Now, my big question is, and again, I will wait patiently for your reply, you don't have to answer now, but is there something we can do to start enforcing the, this cover-your-load thing? And a couple of, one or two deputies in different spaces, because everyone's got to travel down 340 to get to that recycling area. And start holding these people over and telling them, listen, you've got to cover your loads because there's trash up and down 340. Seems, sometimes it seems to gather right over to that brand-new bridge that they put in. And it's, you know, I like where I live and, you know, I'd like to say, see it stay, you know, relatively beautiful and nice. Another question I have, and again, I will wait patiently for the answer, is- Another question I have, and again, I will wait patiently for the answer, is who's familiar with the jake brake? Are most of you familiar what a jake brake is? I'm an 18-wheeler. Okay, I live in a house that I consider to be almost, well, let's put it to you this way. My window sills are about that deep. I can use my window sills as a bookshop. So it's a concrete block house, okay? It takes a lot to get noise to come into my house. 3:00 this morning, I am sound asleep. I checked the time, because I could not believe the audacity of this driver. This truck driver comes roaring down our street with his jake brake on, and I actually heard it, and it woke me up out of the dead sleep. Now, my question is this, maybe it's something for VDOT, I don't know. When I was a truck driver for a very short period of time, occasionally I would drive through small residential areas, and I would find a sign posting, "This is a residential area, you need to not use your jake brake." Is there something similar that we can do in Warren County to that effect? Now, that's a question that I will patiently wait for an answer. Another thing that I would like to just comment on briefly is for the past few months, we have witnessed a outpouring of citizen complaint. We have also witnessed a large increasing numbers of activist groups, such as the Warren County Coalition, One Mad Mother, I think is the name of another one. Believe it or not, this is a very positive thing for Warren County. So positive, in fact, that I would encourage, if I had the opportunity, the Virginia Commonwealth Government to pay attention to what's going on in Frontwell. I would even go so far as to say that the federal government, in particular, the House of Representatives and the United States Senate, and even the President of the United States, to pay attention to what is going on in Warren County. Warren County is a glaring example of what happens when the citizens finally rise up and say, we have had enough. Because, you know, that is what citizen participation is about, holding their elected officials accountable. Granted, it should be done on a monthly basis, weekly basis, daily basis. Sometimes, we citizens have a tendency to fall asleep at the wheel, and before we realize it, work it with bottom-shell announcements in the newspaper. That shouldn't happen, that should be a rarity. The citizens of Warren County are showing us now, and showing you now, what happens when they finally say, you've had your chance, and if you don't do something about it real quick, you're going to be voted out of office. This is a shining example of what the federal government, or the House of Representatives and the Senate, should be worrying about. I mean, if Warren County, the citizens of Warren County and citizens of Frontwell can rise up and literally seize control of a public hearing at a Warren County Board of Supervisors meeting, to the point of one man standing up and saying, suspend the rules, think what would happen if an entire nation rolls up against the House of Representatives. So Frontwell is an example, granted on a very small scale, you know, what happens when the government fails the citizens, and the citizens rise up and say, enough is enough. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Mouse, anyone else?
No one else to sign up?
Is there anyone else who would care to speak at this time? Is there anyone else who would care to speak? Third and final call, with nothing else to be done, we are adjourned.